United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Manning?
Here.
Brennaman?
Here.
Keel?
Here.
O'Hara?
Here.
Randall?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
And Mon, and said he will be late.
All right, do we have any motions to approve the agenda?
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion aside for discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I look for motions to approve the special meeting number 10-4 and a motion for the regular meeting of 10-5.
I'll make a motion to do on both at once, Mayor, or?
I think we could do the same at once. I think we have the same tangents.
I'd make a motion to approve minutes for both the special meeting and the regular meeting in a first week in October.
Second. Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed there, James? All right, next one move to Wilson. Second. All right, discussion? And none? We vote? Jones?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
And Keel?
Yes.
All right. Now we've got some time to set out on the agenda for any public comments that may be non-agenda. If you've got something that you want to talk about or anything like that, it's another chance. If it's on the agenda, we have too many to talk about, but if it's on the agenda, we can fix something for non-agenda. We have two. So we keep on moving. We have got second reading for the 718, the highs and fees. Teresa's got some information active on this based on the first reading and some of the program expense numbers.
Yep, so we've already had first reading. At first reading, we decided to make a couple of changes, mainly to the swimming pool passes, season pass and individual going from the 3225 up to 40. We eliminated the family pass and then the daily pass was set at, going from $2 to $3 for everybody five years old and older, basically. The only other change is the restaurant liquor license that goes off of our population. I have the wrong population number at the last meeting. I had 3396. It's actually 3354. So I corrected that in there. So those are the only changes since our first reading.
Any questions, discussion, or motions on the 718?
Well, there was a lot of chatter that I'm sure some of the council members seen regarding the pool increase. Part of the reason that I asked Teresa to pull the revenue and expenses, I mean, we've known for a long time that it's not a moneymaker, but I don't know that I realized that it was quite as deficit as it is. I mean, I understand people not wanting us to raise our fees, but in 2021, we're showing a loss of $86,000 over three months for the summer. Part of our responsibility is to be judicious with the city's money. We have to sometimes look at increases in certain fees to try to at least get closer to paying our, paying the way. I know we'll never get there, but I'm just trying to see if we can get a little closer.
I agree with you, Arden. I was extremely surprised at the loss. If we're running a business, that's, if we look at this as a business, that's, that's pretty incredible.
And I don't know, Teresa, if you did any extrapolation on the numbers, if we do change according to the amount of passes this year, put our increase in there, what that's going to do to our revenue?
I guess I haven't turned any of that. I mean, it's speculation of how many single passes we can get now versus the family. We'll probably know a lot more after this first reading. You know, like I said, we'll never be a moneymaker. It's an amenity that we provide the public. But we do know we're going to have to increase, as we talked about, you know, what we pay out for wages to attract any, you know, lifeguards or even manager at this point. We do know utility rates are going up, natural gas especially. We're one of the few heated pools and that's a big cost in our utilities is to heat that and for gas. So I mean, it's definitely, you know, you see the projected budgets for 2022. It's definitely an expense. So I say, well, never make money out of it and we know we won't. That's not our objective. But like you said, try to be just a little conscious of the taxpayers' money.
With that being said, I understand people, you know, with three or four members in a family not wanting their rate for what they're paying to be too much. Do I have an answer? No. I mean, I got just Deb and I, so I mean, I'm not in that situation. So I'm probably not the one to comment or...
I think one of the biggest issues, as I understand too, with family passes was that there were misuses of the family passes. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, Amy's always had a trouble, you know, and we're a manager with, you know, we have a family pass and it's always been who is on that family pass because, you know, many people sign up for it. They want to put grandmas and grandpas, uncles, babysitters. I mean, it's, you know, we try to make the definition. I read that definition to you last week and it's, it's still probably pretty complicated of who should fit on that pass. There are so many different family units. I mean, some people get kids for the summertime. Some people have them every week. And I mean, it's just really hard to narrow down who fits that family pass. And like I said, Amy, you know, it was vermillion. I think I believe who has just a single pass and just kind of made it black and white, you know, every person just gets a single pass. They always have the option of just paying per session too when they come in, you know, if it's your kids that mainly use it during the week, but your parents just want to come in the weekend, they can just pay a day with, you know, a session price versus buying a whole pass. And you know, and when you question people about, you know, who the oldest in the family, people get kind of upset about that and it's, it's just hard to figure out what that family definition is and who fits on that. And all towns struggle with that. You see a lot of it, chit chatter between the other towns and yeah, everyone kind of treats it differently.
Yeah, I know there's some really good access softwares, if you will, out there, RecTrack, you know, whatever you want to use, which I know Supal's uses RecTrack for their access to all their pools. However, the problem with that is, is that we would then need to be purchasing software. So there we have another expense and that, you know, that would help with identification of who's paid, who hasn't, who's in the family, that kind of thing. But that's not really our, I don't hear that that's our biggest issue.
No, it's not tracking who has a pass isn't our issue. It's tracking who gets on the pass, the family passes.
Which, yeah, those, those types of software programs would help with, but...
Motion to approve second reading, board at 718.
Second. Any questions? Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yeah.
Jones?
No.
And, yeah. All right. We have any passes? From there, we'll move to first reading, board at 719, which is the franchise agreement between State Hartford and Midco Communications.
Before we kind of start, I'll just kind of give you a little background. Mid, Cotton Communications has come to the city and is interested in doing a franchise agreement with the city to install basically cable services within the city and be a service provider. The franchise agreement, which is ordered at 719, is in your packet. It's in order. It's this first reading. It mirrors the same franchise agreement that we have with Golden West. So, you know, apples to apples comparison. And I think Andrew with Midco is here. I just kind of want to go through you and visit what they plan to do and answer your questions, Jimmy, now.
All right, well, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity. As Teresa mentioned, my name is Andrew Pearlie. I'm the Director of Government Relations with Midco and I have a couple of colleagues here. I'll introduce themselves at various points throughout this presentation. I'll just kind of walk through this call point slide that I've handed to all of you. So on the first page, as Teresa mentioned, you know, kind of why we're here, we're looking to build out our fiber infrastructure in State Hartford, be a fiber to home network, capable of 5D of symmetrical speed and provide, like I said, fiber-based cable TV and internet service to residents of Hartford. Just want to give a little bit of background on Midco if you still aren't familiar. So the next slide, we talked a little bit about our history. We were founded in 1931 as a movie theater company. The initial name was the Well Worth Theater Company. Our founder called it that. He wanted it to be well worth the dime that patrons paid for this service. And it's kind of an ethos that we kept throughout our history. Went from movie theaters and radio, operated Kellal Radio for about 40 years. In 1953, founded the first cable TV station in the state of South Dakota, Kellal Line TV. Recently owned and operated by Midco as well. And over the last about 25 years, we've been your service provider, internet cable TV services. We serve, we have about 1,700 employees across our footprint. We're primarily the Dakotas and Minnesota, system in Lawrence, Kansas, and then we have lead into Wisconsin. About half of that workforce is based of our Sioux Falls offices in the surrounding region, including a few of our employees that are residents here in Hartford. We've got almost 100 million customers across our footprint and we serve over 400 communities that we've got franchise agreements like one we're requesting here in State of Hartford across that footprint. A little bit about our fiber network. So Midco's got the largest wholly owned and operated fiber networks in the upper Midwest, over almost 11,000 miles across our footprint. While we pride ourselves on having five nines of reliability in that network and that includes redundant rings throughout our system. So for example, if a fiber would be cut between here and Sioux Falls in our head end, you know, the service won't go down. It should be routed a different direction. We've got kind of built in redundant rings throughout our entire footprint. And we monitor our system 24/7, 365 through our network operations center, which is also in Sioux Falls. Talk a little bit about some investments we continue to make in our network. We recently announced in July, our Fiber Forward Initiative, which is a $500 million investment in upgrading our entire network, more fiber-based services, like what we started out with here in Hartford. And our goal is to deliver 10 days of speed, which would be the fastest we know in the world. Our goal is to have that deployed across our network by 2025. It's kind of demonstrating that we, when we build a network, we don't just kind of leave a statement. We're looking to invest in it and provide the latest, greatest technology to the communities that we serve. A little bit about our community involvement. Our CEO likes to talk about us being a force for good in the communities we serve. We recognize that when we come to a community, what's good for that community is also good for Midco and vice versa. We can give back to our communities in multiple ways. We invest in economic development initiatives. We sponsor things with schools and other community nonprofits. We have a Midco Foundation, which gives out grants to foundation to nonprofits twice a year. So nonprofits in the communities in our footprint can apply to our foundation and receive grants. And then we have a program called Midco Acts, which allows us as employees to give back to the communities we serve. So for example, there's a couple of different employee groups planning and rate the town activities in Sioux Falls and Brandon across our footprint. We had a group building benches out at the fire camp at the Black Hills a couple of weeks ago. It's an opportunity that our employer gives us to give back to the areas that we serve. So we look to be a good community partner in any community that we serve and that's what you'd be getting in Midco should you pass this franchise and allow us to expand our services into town. This next slide is about customer support and I'll have a couple of my colleagues kind of run the network once it's up and run, introduce themselves and probably about how we operate our network flying in there.
Okay. My name is...
Thank you.
It's better for the camera.
So my name is Brian Fenn. Thank you for allowing us to be here and talk to you a little bit. So I'm the General Manager of Field Operations for the Sioux Falls region, which is basically everything east of the Missouri River, includes Sioux Falls and hopefully Hartford. So this is a period and we have a local team. That's the biggest technical operations center actually in Midco's footprint is right there in Sioux Falls. So probably the biggest benefit is we'll have all of those techs and all the resources that are at the disposal in the city. So all of those surrounding areas of Sioux Falls have that large team. So we have business-specific field techs. We really pride ourselves on customer service and quick response time. If you have a problem, we're out there same day typically. So our goal was under a day, but we always beat that. Our goal in Sioux Falls region is better than that. So, and we didn't achieve that. You have a problem, we're going to be out there right away. We also have 15-minute time windows, which is pretty unique, you know, in this space. So if you call and 9:15 is the time that works for you, we're going to be there and we achieved that 98% of the time typically. So, yeah, and we have 24/7 support from our operations team and call center support as well. Andrew mentioned that earlier. So we have some employees that already live here in Hartford, like Andrew talked about. And yeah, we're excited that if this gets a bird, we'll be happy to have our field tech on this city as well. So, yeah, I mean, question really, like, so we have large teams in Sioux Falls and they'll be dedicated to help out here. We're just going to quick drive over. So, motion to read or anything? Here's my boss, he's the Director of Field Operations. Yes, please. But yeah, we have a local team. We're out. We have six field service managers right here in Sioux Falls as well. You know, if you ever have an issue, you need to see somebody, you know, face to face, we can get them out and they do a great job, you know, resolving issues. Like I think there's never issues, but there are and we take care of them right away and we try to be honest about it and make the drive. So, question or anything for me? Want to take care of it?
No.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll have Brian, can I come up and talk through the construction process? What does it look like? Should we begin construction in 2022?
Thank you. My name is Brian Bar. I'm a Senior Construction Project Manager. As you can see in front of you, the map here is kind of what our tentative build-out area would be. I would say in the next couple of weeks, we're going to have a third-party company come in and do a walkout, an assessment of the town, do some, a design, kind of mirror exactly what Golden West has and where all the hover tubs are at. So we're going to mirror that as far as putting our structures out in the field. Hopefully this build, this build here, we're going to get started in the springtime, hopefully last about three to four months. Typically, on a scale of this size, I usually run about two or three drills for the whole summer. We get started roughly about 7:00 in the morning, finish about 7:00 at night. Each drill typically gets about 500 feet a day. So with that being said, we'd like to call vocates in at least a week to 10 days ahead of time, just so all the parties, you know, have plenty of time to go through and locate. So let's not call the ticket today. We technically drill on Thursday morning. Obviously, 48 hours is not going to be enough to get everything located based on the moment we're going to come in. We send out initial mailers to let everybody know where we come to town. Before we get started in a certain area, we send out postcards to that specific area for those residents two weeks in advance. Before we get started, we call them vocates. So obviously that's going to take a few days there. And also the contractor will go out and put door tags on the residence stores so they know, go in advance, give the mailer, give the door tags, give the postcards, so they're going to have enough notification that we're coming to town to be able to work. Any digging that's going to be done in the yards, obviously we've got to dig up and expose existing utilities as they come through. So even though there's not going to be, you know, a pedestal or anything like that on your property, any utility we cross, we do have to dig up and expose. First off, total one call, everybody's safety. Once we dig it up, expose that utility, see how deep it is, we adjust our depth, come through, and then that gets coming back up. So any holes we dig, contractors do put down tarts, all the dirt, anything that gets put on the tarp, expose utility, spot it, and then obviously that gets coming back up. As far as easements, things like that, we will work with the, obviously the city, see if there's any existing utility easements in the areas we're going to be working in. If we do have to obtain any private easements, obviously we're going to go to the homeowners and try to capture a private easement from that home. Just allows to come through the same path that Golden West is right now. Once we are done with our main infrastructure, there's going to be probably another contractor coming through based on any services that need to be buried or anybody that has requested service. Another contractor will come through and bury those services up to their house. We do pre-bury drops as well. So as we're coming through, building our infrastructure, if we have a resident that is inquiring about our service, would request the drop be buried ahead of time, obviously we get that done at the same time we come through and do our main infrastructure.
You bore the drop or you?
It's all bored in.
Oh, bored in.
Yep. Yep. And everything we put in here would be introduced and conduit. So then we GPS everything to that we put in. So anything we cross as far as any existing utilities, you know, whatever we put in, we GPS that. So typically, once we come through, we build a new, a new town. What we've done in the past is worked with the city and if they want the shape files based on what we take, we can offer those shape files to you guys. So then you know where maybe your water, your sewer, gas lines, you know, whatever else is in the ground that we had captured. We give that information to you so that in turn you can use that info on a future, you know, road project or what have you. Any questions on the construction?
It's just probably an oversight or maybe the Google image isn't that recent. It's a whole development there though.
To the south there?
Yeah.
Yep.
Got a tree hats as well.
Yep, yep. Yep. And then I notice too, there's some new development too going on around the west part of town. There's a lot of sound that's, that's new too.
All right. Thank you.
And so we'll go through all those final slides, but you know, you can see in there kind of the process that we have, the steps that Brian had talked through. All that information will be available on our website and you'll have the access. So hartmidco.com/hartford, which will go live once we send out those kind of initial communications. Will be an area where residents can go in, they can sign up for updates, they can see a map of like what area we're working in at that time. And then there's also that construction support that lays out all these kinds of steps. So they're informed, like what does this mean? If the letter is not enough information, they want to find out more, our midco.com/hartford will have, capture all of that information. So most final slides, kind of just as Brian mentioned, the communication is deep from our perspective. You've got examples of all the letters that we'll send out, but they'll be roughly five touchpoints of, hey, we're coming to town, hey, we're starting construction, hey, we're going to be in your neighborhood. And then the door tags, say, hey, we're going to be working in your yard potentially. One thing I would point out too is there'll be a phone number on those door tags going to a Midco employee because they'll be seeing this project in town. So if somebody's got a concern, why are you in my yard or wherever, they've got that access to somebody from Midco that got contracted and started working there. And then there'll also be the communication of, hey, we're wrapping up, we want our services. Here's how to do that. So we recognize that we come to town, people are going to have questions. We want to make sure we're open and honest and communicating with them about anything that may come up and trying to anticipate their questions and then address them on the front end. So that's kind of the communication. Again, you have the examples of the letters we'll send. So talking about next steps, of course, we would love for approval of a franchise. Kind of gives us authority to drive into service in the community and we can kind of start those planning processes in earnest over the winter, be ready to go for the summer or, yeah, construction season. So that is all we had and we'll open for any questions.
Can you make the comment, working in people's yard, you're going to tell them they're working in their yard, but that's the easement or that's the right?
Correct, yep.
So their yard, but it's the city.
Yeah, it'll be in the...
Because they're going to let you know.
Yeah, absolutely, yep.
Because they know, they know where the, where the right of way is and where their yard begins.
Yep, absolutely. Or, yeah, try to be transparent about where we're going to be.
Well, I think some of the older parts of the town are getting missed, how much, not area you can, but there's 15 feet behind the curve, so.
Yeah, and that's kind of some of the work we'll be doing over the winter to kind of identify exactly where those areas are that do have the necessary reasons for the ones you might be to obtain one. Kind of work with those homeowners that we do.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew, any motions on first reading of 718? Second. Any discussion?
Time to, this is potentially very good, especially if they don't have a pool option. Yep, potentially another.
A more cable.
A more cable.
There you go.
I think we're going to silver lining here.
Yep. All right, any other discussion? Can we vote again?
Aye.
Jones?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so we've got a resolution 2021-10, a special assessment.
So as the council is aware, this last summer, we went into the property 200 North Main to do an abatement of junk. All those costs have been gathered and so now this special assessment would be assessing those costs onto that property. It was a total of $3,355.52.
All right, any questions or motions?
Motion approved. Resolution 2021-10.
Second.
Discussion? I vote Brennaman.
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
All right, any reports? First one we got up is...
Hi, I'm Leo Candy Crouch. I'm one of Assistant Chiefs of the Fire Department on that duty of mine, so he sent me. Just kind of a recap of September, we ran 30 total calls, nine of which were in the city, Hartford. We did two different trainings for October. On our EMS medical side, we did trauma. On our fire side, we're going to be doing a live fire exercise. And then as a combined group, we talked about grieving rescue two weeks ago. Now we did fire prevention week. So we had members from our department who visited the Hartford Elementary School. We did tours, a few daycares in towns, and then we did a live burn at the middle school. And then just FYI, we are planning on doing the glow stick event that we generally do on Halloween night. So we ordered like glow necklaces and we just drive around in hand. That's all I have for an update. Are there any questions?
Chamber, I can have a fellow to report?
Thank you. My information is in the packet, but I would like to touch on a few things additionally. The Chamber will be having their annual meeting on Monday, November 8th at Buffalo Bridge. With that as well, the Hartford Area Development Foundation will be having their annual meeting on November 9th at Central Valley. So some events there. And then the Invision will have a meeting on November 10th at 7:00 PM here at City Hall. So some events there, and then the Invision will have a meeting on November tenth, at seven PM here at City Hall. With that being said, we also have the, similar to them, October thirtieth, we're going to have the Chambers trunk or treat event at West Central. So we've had about thirty-five individuals participating in that thus far. They will park their vehicles, and kids will walk through and get some goodies. I participated along with the mayor, Ann Travis, council member Keel, on the SMGA bus tour around the Ha Ha community. And I believe that is it. I did have one phone call, or actually I get phone calls from time to time from different council members, just on different things. But any of you, if any of you would like to set up like a monthly meeting schedule with me, I'd be happy to do that, to go over the things that I am working on. And that's my report.
Any questions for you?
Since you brought my name into this, I would just like to, the council to take time, at some point, in the next tour of the county, schedule to do that, to take that time, it's well worth it. Give you an opportunity to visit with the county commissioners, and I would encourage all of you to reach out to them at some point, to figure out what is in the column, document, about Hartford, our plans, and their plan.
Yeah, it's a good chance to build a relationship with them, and then get to know each other.
All right, we'll move to highest teacher.
All right, thank you much. So you got your report, my report in front of you, C I B updates. Overall, working through some of the wording on that. Water tower painting is on hold for right now, so it's really Western Avenue interchange. Western Avenue is phase five, for the first slip of asphalt, it's actually installed. Looks really good up there, I don't know if you got any chance to go up there, but there's a couple small little punch list items that we came up with, but really did a nice job on that. Really like to see topside place, you can see that grading coming together. A lot of the things that we've really been pushing on that phase four, couple items remain on that, but overall look pretty good. Vance Peterson, we have another letter going out to them, just to try to get a schedule on that, more than anything. Just that, like, we get kind of running out of the construction season, really want to commit to a timeline of getting that remedied. Six in the month, that roadway reconstruction, we were surveying last week, and we'll be surveying this week, and I've seen our survey trucks around there this week, and we'll continue to see that. And then on the wastewater feasibility study, continue to have some discussions with communities. And then several members, we actually had a meeting with the city of Sioux Falls, and I do have a couple documents to actually go over. Michael, you want to hand out the one that was provided? So did meet with Mark Cotter and Ryan Johnson, to advance that discussion in regards to Sioux Falls, and their regionalization option. They were kind enough to come prepared with the option, and really how they saw it as well. So they actually laid out the buy-in, the actual true cost on buy-in, and they just said, hey, these are rough numbers, but did want to provide something to base that review off of. And then also outlining exactly how they would connect, so they have oversized the lift station at Foundation Park. For some level of regionalization, they kind of indicated more, it's opportunistic that that would be available there, would be liable for that force main, the lift station to get there in the force main route. And then if you see that step three, that pay as you grow, that's really, as you add additional users, which continue to be, as we build homes and and commercial residences, they actually do have a per meter charge that would be charged as a part of that, each time one of those are connected. And then the monthly invoices, that's really for their treatment side. So there's the, kind of the, the cost of the infrastructure, and then the cost of actually treating that wastewater on an ongoing thousand per gallon rate basis as well. So it was really great information, really, Arden said it on that, I thought it was a really good conversation. And it was, it was great that they took the time to sit down, we've had multiple discussions with them, kind of keeping them up to date of where we were at, because they really did want to, we're interested in where we were at in that regards to that analysis as well. So I really appreciate that, what they, what they put together. You want to hand out the next one, or do you want to write it out?
Both of you.
All right, all right, good job, Michael. So overall, what we did is we took their pumping to Sioux Falls option, right? And we broke that down, and put it in direct comparison to your Hartford water rec facility yourself. So that's the document that we've prepared here, and I'll walk you through, because it is a little bit confusing on how all this works. So service accounts are the same, design capacity, so your scenario two is what you've been discussing, has that one point five six M G D capacity there. The, we put an N A on the city of Sioux Falls, because really what they look at instead is, what's your average flow rate to them? And that's really how they're going to calculate what you're going to pay. So in a sense, there's not so much a design capacity, because there is some level of flexibility there. They have the connection charges outlined, so you know that. Now, if a large opportunity came, they most certainly did say, yeah, we're going to want to know about that in advance. So there is that, but the actual operational flow would be the same. No, no difference if you were staying with yourself, or if you were going with them. So that operational flow at that, what you are today. The lagoon rehab, we had quite a few, quite a long discussion with them on this, because if you did look at their, at their analysis, down at the bottom on that step four, monthly invoices, there was a EQ credit. So if you were actually able to keep your equalization, your lagoons, in a sense, they would give you a credit back to your service rate. Because they see the advantage of having equalization throughout their entire system. They look at it, you know, region, which is great. And there's a real value to that, so they would give you a credit. But, but our, our discussion was, well, in all reality, if we're going to compare this apples to apples, we're going away with the lagoons. We're getting rid of them. So we did, we did take that out, and we did still want to include though, the cost of rehabbing that. So the lagoon rehabilitation, so that you could actually be able to sell it. That's really, the taking down of the dikes, really leveling that off, and taking the sludge, and properly disposing of the sludge that is in the lagoons. The Hartford collection and lift station cost, that's a cost either way. There is some additional incremental cost of going to the city of Sioux Falls, just because it's six point seven five miles. If you remember, your water rec facility that we're looking at, that location, is just across the interstate. So there's a significant additional, total dynamic head, to go the six point seven five miles and an additional elevation. On the Hartford force main to Foundation Park, so that's the six point seven five miles, that's actually the force main, the valves, the manholes, the air relief valves that are going to be necessary, and the land acquisition easements. What we discussed there, was it is a really nice corridor from the standpoint that today is a gravel road. But knowing development in a sense, we're going to not want to be directly in that dish, if that roadway gets improved. We don't want to bear the cost then, to relocate that force main, way away from there, and we just put it in, right? So we'd actually want to go and get those easements along that. So we did include costs for that as well. And then the Hartford wastewater treatment facility on the left side, remains the same for scenario two. And then the Sioux Falls buy-in, we took their exact number. So from a total upfront capital expenditure, really, really similar, you know, spot on, really. And we were surprised on how close it was. But that's great, you know, I mean, I think they're most certainly two definite alternatives there, that we were, that we were viewing. Then if you get into the base rate monthly, your operating cost is really what we've always included, is the three hundred and twenty-six thousand for your own facility on the left side. The three eighty-one below is just actually breaking that down into your per gallon uses, per thousand gallons. That's the three eighty-one that we're conveying into your total rate increase. And the total rate increase also includes the debt payment on the note for the facility, the collection system, and the lagoon rehabilitation. On the opposite side, the pump into Sioux Falls option, you have their base rate, which was provided. The base rate on a per thousand gallon basis, over your, the water that you're going to pump there, same amount. And then you are, that operating cost really just includes the base rate and the base rate per thousand gallons. Because the base rate, which is kind of confusing at that nineteen dollars and ninety-four cents, is actually just one base rate. Because you're one user. So that's the, the two set difference between the six twenty-one and six twenty-three, is actually the nineteen ninety-four over the eleven, eleven hundred and forty-four service accounts. So if you look down, the total rate is really where you're targeting some level of a difference, which is not surprising. You would be paying them to treat it, or you're treating it yourself in your own wastewater treatment plant. So what we did also include, on the bottom, for comparing out over the twenty years, which is really what they're anticipating there for growth, is we did include three percent increase in flow rates and operating costs, which is pretty standard, and our assumed five percent annual growth. In our assumed five percent annual growth, we did include the cost of each one of those connections. Now, Theresa, we were talking about this, the, the, the cost of those additional users, would you directly pass that on in a, in a cost of building, or would you pass that on to their rates? We're kind of sitting there saying, well, that's, that's up to you, but it is a cost that would be incurred, and you would pay back to the city of Sioux Falls at the end of the year, so. Any questions in regards to the comparison? I know it's a lot of information, you know, a lot to review there as well.
Like the analysis on the annual operating cost, comparing those two, I think that was figured out. And the estimates on the connection cost there, just to see where that would.
Yep, yep, and we actually had some pretty good numbers, actually provided by them, just to compare it to. So T's connecting five miles away, just in the past, I didn't have it. Four point seven five miles away, and their cost to run the force main in the, in the pump station there, so that's a little bit different, is anticipated to be eight point eight million. We're pulling our lift station out, and we're pulling it out because we wanted to make sure that everybody was understanding that, this is an apples to apples comparison, that we're including it on, on both options. So we did, we did pull that out, but at six point, we do have two additional miles, but we do think it's going to be cheaper than what T anticipated.
Did they discuss their contract link, how often is that contract looked at and negotiated?
They didn't. No, I don't, I don't think it included on that bottom. I don't think it did.
I thought he said, oh, that they, they talked yearly on a yearly basis. If consortium of whoever it's hooked on to.
Yep.
So it'd be Brandon or T, or whoever.
Yeah, and Arden, I think you did ask a really good question too, to those folks, to Ryan and Mark, of hey, if we choose to go by ourselves, you going to hold it against us? And, and they were, they were really good. They said, no, absolutely, absolutely not, you got to do what's best for you two, and we understand it's a, it's a big decision. You know, I, I think their big push is the, the, the great part is the fact that you don't have a discharge for that. You know, I mean, you're, you're sending it to them, they're treating the wastewater, and there's definitely something to hang your hat on, to not worry about it, you know, outside, out of mind. I think that there's, there's definitely something there. But at the same time, I think remaining your independence has most certainly its advantages as well.
The Hartford cost, Dave?
Yeah, yep.
If you take out the lagoon rehabilitation. So if I'm looking at that, right, the force main, what would be the lift station, the collection of the lift station?
Yep.
And the plant itself here at, would it be like thirteen four?
Something like that, yeah, yep, right around there, yep.
And that's to build that plant?
Yes.
For thirteen four?
Yep, yep.
A brand new Aromod.
For scenario two, yep.
I think that number is low.
Yeah, and we've, and we just checked with Aromod as well. When we did the update on the per, because we did the feasibility study, and then had a little bit of time in between. And we reached out to Aromod again, just to see, especially with the fluctuation, you know, of, everything's fluctuating right now, it's tires. But, but we did reach out to them, and their number actually lowered a little bit. We did modify, we did modify that down, just because we're so early on. We're still carrying a ten percent contingency on all of the numbers today too. I think, I think sometimes what people see is the, the large numbers, you know, even when we were comparing it to like a Harrisburg large one. We're also graced with being pretty darned close to our outfall line, so we're not, on the outfall side, we're not pumping that out. We're actually grabbing that out of our system, which is great. And then we're only going. Thousand feet?
Yeah. How far, how far do you have to go with their out?
I want some miles. Six, I think.
Really, six miles?
And pump it.
So their force main on their help of.
Yep. Yep, and then they had, I don't, I don't know what you had in that, and it'd be hard to pull it into this particular project, since you've already purchased it. But they also had significant costs on the land. They had it outlined on their, on that analysis, I think they had, I want to say it was a little over three million dollars on their land acquisition.
Well, but I mean, the lands, the lands are regardless, I mean, you're always going to buy your own land.
Yeah.
Did you, when you guys, did you go to Harrisburg, or was that just Rachel and?
Yep, no, no.
Anybody asked what that plant, actually the hard number of that plant would have cost, minus the, minus the force main, six mile discharge?
They, their plant cost, and I don't know if we've seen the full breakdown, I think they were around sixteen for the plant itself.
And that's with the six mile?
I don't know if, that's what I'm not sure. I don't.
I think I seen your, I think I seen your head.
I'm on their website today, for the facility itself. The facility was sixteen point four million. Everything, including the lagoon rehabilitation, the land, and the five mile force main, was twenty-five point eight million.
You, you see those big ones?
Twenty-five point eight, but that includes the.
Land.
Land, yeah. That's the land, some new reclamation, and the force main.
Correct.
What was their capacity, if they, you remember?
I think it was only one.
I think it was.
Only one?
So we're proposing a one point five six, and they're at a one?
They're at a one.
And they're going to spend it, they're spending twenty-five million.
So what, if you're looking at it, so what's, can you break the costs out for just the plant itself, what that's like cost? Minus the land, minus the lagoon reclamation, minus the six miles of force main to the discharge, can we, can we get the number for just the plant?
I think we can most certainly request it to.
I'd just be curious.
Yeah, yeah. And, and that's what the, the other thing is, they're, they're also, similarly, I think that they are building for quadrupling capacity. So I think there's some.
Up to four, or up to three?
I think four, pretty sure.
Did you have a number, did you say sixteen? Or it's twenty-five with the other stuff? You figure about a million dollars a mile for the force main, you figure three million for the land, and you figure two million for the reclamation of the lagoons. And that's how you get from sixteen to twenty-five in Harrisburg.
And I, I wanted, but I wanted to say that reclamation might have been a little bit more, I don't remember. Because the one thing that you're graced with, and I think that even when the city of Sioux Falls was looking at some of it, they were surprised on our reclamation not being too bad, and then we had to remind them that the lagoons are only twenty years old. And we don't have much sludge, which is a really big difference, you know, I mean, I think some, some folks are sitting with the millions that are thirty to forty years old. They've got a ton of sludge in there that they haven't removed. And now they're upfronting this massive capital to, to, to deal with that, which I think is, I think is, is a hindrance, you know, in a sense, but you got to take care of it sometime too. But yeah, I, I, I think they're, I think they're really comparable capital costs. Um, but I think, I think, I mean, a- as much as I think that the capital cost is everything, I also think you gotta, you gotta look at the operation costs, you know, and, and sending it to them and they're gonna treat it, you're gonna pay. You know, you're gonna have to pass on that user rate as well.
Was it, was it Brandon Craig that, that made a deal with Brandon twenty years ago and then, and then?
Yeah, they.
And then that didn't turn out very well and then it went, it went back on their own?
No, Harris, no, Harrisburg.
Harrisburg was one of them.
Brandon had the, uh, kind of lagoons or equalization basin, but they've been discharging to Sioux Falls for over twenty years.
Oh.
Yep, they renegotiated when they were, started bringing up the regionalization, a lot of us told her, talked about how expensive it was and Brandon got to talk about that. They redid their negotiation and they actually dropped their price a little bit to get rid of it. But Brandon right now is a hundred percent break to Sioux Falls.
What, what do I recall? Didn't, how many years ago we had all that flooding in the water? Wasn't there, wasn't there a situation in Brandon where they were either gonna flood a bunch of houses with sewage or they were gonna discharge it in the river out of compliance to the two to about a one million dollar fine? Do you remember that?
I think there's a lot of towns like that.
Was there?
Sioux Falls had to do that.
But I, I remember, I remember Brandon, I remember Brandon made the fine instead of putting it in the basements.
Cause I don't think, uh, Sioux Falls at the time, they're, the way they're set up, they weren't ready to take that much water. So they've said, you're only allowed to give us this much and that's all.
And they didn't have enough, didn't have enough.
The fertilization or anything like that. And Harrisburg actually, um, went to Sioux Falls. Um, then it went back to build their own plant and when they first fired up, they were actually still discharging to Sioux Falls. Uh, last week they actually went on their own system completely, so they're now with Sioux Falls.
I don't know, I like, I like probably being selfish myself. You just never know, it's, no, I mean, it, it, it would be nice, it would be nice not to worry about building it, charging to build it, having somebody to run it. But man, you, you're not the, you're not the leader of your own destiny when you do that, so you're at the mercy of.
I would encourage you to talk to the surrounding communities. I would encourage you to talk to the surrounding communities. They're much harder. Talk to a lot.
But I, I think this is really, you know, the, I, I think it's really good to go through and, I mean, I, I think it's a really good analysis and I think it's really good information even when we submit a preliminary engineering report to articulate. Um, cause that, even at the SMGA, um, event and, and we presented and discussed, you know, uh, what the, what the city's looking at, I think there was a lot of people saying, well, it's gotta be significantly cheaper to go to Sioux Falls. I mean, in, in, in a sense, I think I, I get where they, they think that and believe that. Um, but to see the hard fast numbers and to understand, well, well, well geez, I mean, even, even if it was, was less, even in a, an upfront cost, there's still the, the cost to treat too. And, and I think a lot of people sit there and say, well, but you're gonna adjust your current rate significantly down. Well, you know, we don't have a huge operational cost for the lagoon system. We don't, I mean, that's the great part about it, you know? But we still, uh, sure have to take care of our collection system too, so. Um, I think there's just, there's some elements that I think, I think including this information in the preliminary engineering report when you're going after funding with the state, I think should be really viewed positively that you evaluate it all here, alternative.
But how do you, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, you can, you can put a cost on first year, maybe put a cost on second year, but how do you forecast ten years? Cause I mean, honestly, you don't know what, you don't, you don't know what Sioux Falls rate's gonna be. How do you forecast fifteen years?
Yeah, I.
No, I'm, I'm asking, how do you do that?
I, I, I think, I think Rachel may have asked the same question in the meeting and, and they said, well, I anticipate a three percent increase. And, and, and that's, and that's the thing, and, 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 I mean, I, I don't think they can give you a, a better response than that. Um, but at the same time, yeah, I, I think the one thing that, you know, what we're calculating in and looking at that, you know, your life cycle cost, and if we truly anticipate five percent annual growth, you're gonna have to pay every one of those twenty-five hundred dollar per connection costs. And, and what I kept on going back to was, yeah, we could, we can pass it along either in a building permit or we can pass it along in, in a user rate, but if you're passing it along in a user rate, that's, you know, if you just said, okay, well, you're gonna have an increased rate for ten years to pay off that twenty-five hundred bucks, that's twenty dollars and eighty-three cents per month that they're gonna pay for, for ten years to pay off that, just the connection fee, so. And that's just one. Um, so I think that's why we wanted to give a little bit of life around, hey, you're gonna have that, that, that cost every year when they ask how many homes were built or new users that were put online. Um, that's something real that you're gonna have to evaluate.
It was definitely good to talk to.
I mean, yeah, it was great, yeah. And, and I don't think, I think it was most certainly worth.
Yeah.
Uh, and I think it's most certainly worth to, to put the doc, the information directly into the preliminary engineering report to say, hey, we, we are evaluated, we evaluated that as well.
Due diligence.
Well, and I think it's good to provide back to the county too, when they have those questions, that we most certainly are not really about.
Yeah, when I was all, we, uh, spearfished, like Mark Carter called me up aside and kinda went over the numbers cause he knew I was gonna be at the meeting and he said, you know, whatever Hartford decides, he said, you know, you guys, I'll be behind you on my own decision, basically, so.
Right, yeah. I don't think he was surprised when I, when I asked that question, that.
No, I don't think so either.
Fact that we asked that question.
I don't think he was surprised when I asked when, what happens if a large, uh, user comes in and who gets inside.
Breaking news isn't sewer, it's water.
Yeah, I know. The, the only other thing in my engineers report that I did have, community development and downtown plan, we have our big meeting tomorrow night, right? All right, so at the, at the high school gym and we'll have a, a ton of information to review and get public input on, so I would most certainly recommend folks come in and, and give us, giving, giving us that input because that'll really gauge that plan and help you by that, so. Um, but it's coming together, there's a lot of options that'll be outlined and able to comment.
And we encourage you to all ask your neighbors to attend as well, family, friends, everyone that would like to put input into this.
That's great.
Sorry for the delay there.
The only thing I just wanted to touch on is, um, like I said, budget time, we did budget for a field groomer and also for a plowin app. I guess I'd like to go ahead and start looking for some of this stuff, not to purchase it until January because we all know how equipment's gonna get and if we start early on this, we might, we'll have something by next spring, so. That's the only one I wanted to kinda add on.
You'll be a motioner at this time.
I'd say just, yeah, just, if you're okay with it, I'll start looking, when I find some stuff, I'll come back with the numbers.
Curious on that. If you found something that you could get tomorrow, could provide, you can just move some funds around or?
I mean, yeah, you just have to make a motion and take it out of this year's funds, so, yeah, if there's something, I don't.
Most of it, like.
My only thought is being supplies are tough to get, if we find something, we should consider action on it immediately.
I'll start looking, getting word out there that, that's what we're looking forward, see if it's available, so. That's all I really had to add to my report or put in there, I guess, if anybody have any questions for me? Concerns?
All right.
Yeah, my report's in the packet. Uh, the only thing I wanted to, um, touch on was the attendance chart. If you could review that, make sure I haven't missed any of your meetings, pays. And I will be processing payroll on the first and it'll be in your count on the second. So if you can let me know by Friday the twenty-ninth, if I've missed anything, that'd be great.
Um, just a couple of updates from my report. Um, still haven't received a notice to proceed on our grant through the GFMP for the bike trail, so I did get in touch with Brandon Kittle with the GFMP and they are still working on that agreement and that notice. Shouldn't have something before the end of the year though, he said. Um, really, and then any updates, no, no, big updates on the Stockholm projects. They are, um, finalizing the, the big documents and their plans for the industrial sewer and the 12th Street project for next year. He hopes to have bills finalized by the end of the month too, so maybe next month, uh, we can talk about if we wanna proceed right away with going up and getting that out, so that'll be coming up at one of our next meetings. Um, insurance code, my head hasn't received anything back, so I touched base with all of those providers as well. State Farm was one of those, we were trying to get a quote from, um, I touched base with them. They said that they cannot provide the same coverage that we have now, I can't get comparable, so they withdrew from that. And so we're still looking at Reliant Bank and, um, put up insurance and they said they should have something to do with them the next couple, two or three weeks. And then I just would not, my report, I just wanted to let you know, me and Craig did go out and do sidewalk inspections that we do every year. This year it's Ward one, so those letters will be going out, so Wisconsin people in Ward one, if you get any phone calls wondering what this is about, and you know, we inspect sidewalks, let some, uh, you know, if we do find a, um, sidewalk that has an issue with or a problem, we notify the adjoining property or that it's their responsibility, you know, their liability. We do not mandate that they fix anything, but we do give them notice that if they do have a problem with their sidewalk and encourage them to fix it, um, so, you know, those letters will be going out this week within a couple of days. Then you'll be sending them out, so just letting you know if anybody says anything. So, um, that's all I got, if you have any questions for me? One thing I did wanna talk about then, um, that's undermined, is that, um, we have got about, I wanna talk about how we're gonna move forward with the interviewing process for the full-time billiard inspector and code enforcer. We got about twenty-five applications that me and Nate, city administrator and Lennox reviewed. We think there's about eight viable ones or ones probably worth interviewing. Um, obviously, you know, me and him would like to start those interviews because we've been taken for about a month and a half now, applications. Just wondering, I kinda touched base with Jeremy, does anybody else wanna be part of that interview process? Or how we, how we wanna go forward with that interview process with this position? We've been sitting on it for a while and we'd like to start doing some interviews. Don't everybody raise your hands?
Have you guys have them, the two city administrators, interview them, narrow it down to two or whatever you think, two or four?
Or three or something?
And bring them in?
I mean, we certainly can do that and then like then narrow it down to the top two or three applicants. Have you guys review those applications and see if you wanna do second reviews or how you wanna proceed from there, we can do that.
Yep.
Just coordinate it.
Yep, that makes sense.
Okay, well, we'll move forward with that and we will try to get those done maybe in the next couple of weeks, so we can keep moving forward, so. That is all I have.
All right, thank you, Teresa. I'm leaving with all business, we've got, um, the adjusted application form for cannabis establishment.
And we reviewed this at our last meeting. Um, the only changes I made, like we talked about our last meeting, is I put up, you know, the intention is to have this application be for every type of establishment. Um, so I added, you know, uh, basically boxes to check mark what kind of establishment, you know, you're applying for. Whether it's gonna be cultivation, dispensary, testing and so forth. So that's the, the addition and change I made to the application.
All right, do we have any motions or questions on this?
Okay.
Mayor.
So what's, didn't I see in the paper today, or where's the state at on this? It sounds like there's another lawsuit or something, what do you heard, Tom?
There's a summer legislative committee that's talking about proposing legislation that would just say anyone twenty-one and older can possess abused marijuana. And with the uncertainty around medical and what's gonna happen with constitutional amendment that's in Supreme Court. Um, that's, that's just one group of legislators saying that might be their proposal to come out of the summer study of marijuana legislation would be to, to say it's legal for everyone twenty-one and older.
That doesn't affect this application though?
No, no, I, you still need to move forward with this and, I mean, it's a moving target still. We know what's gonna happen on the recreational side in particular, so.
Yeah.
Are you looking? Just waiting.
Just waiting. It's a chronic pain, isn't it?
I, I feel like that joke just shot missed.
There's a lot of, there's more.
I'm thinking most of you's really application.
All right, for the discussion? All right, we'll book. Randall?
Yes.
Why ask?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
Joan?
No.
All right, we're gonna move to business, we've got, here in our planning jurisdiction, track four R, the Spanish edition.
So this is the replat, it's out of city limits, but it is within our growth area, so we have plating jurisdiction. So in order for any property within our growth area to plat or replat, the, the process is they need to come through our boards for approval first and then they can go to the county. This is within our growth area, Joe Haneesh is replating this portion of it. ISG has reviewed it, it meets our regulations, planning and zoning approved it last week at their meeting. It follows all the regulations and standards and we do have assigned to the innovation agreement, so everything complies to our regulations.
Motion to approve replat of track four R, Spanish edition.
Standing. Discussion. We'll book. Herman?
Yeah.
Joan?
Yes.
O'Hagan?
Yeah.
Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, next we got the surplus list, couple things on there, the surplus.
Basically with the, the, the couple of items of the playground equipment, now that we've replaced the equipment in Turtle Creek with, you know, what we refurbished from Sioux Falls, get rid of that older one. Um, and then we also got a swing set with, from Sioux Falls, um, that we're in actually replaced or put in our main park and then replace, get rid of one of those swing sets in the main park. They're both just old and they need to be scrapped. We also had, um, at the pool, cash register brought on, it's this past year, so we, we bought a new one and so we just like to scrap the one that doesn't work anymore. Um, we have a couple of bikes that have been found on city properties. Not in good shape at all, I think they've just been abandoned, we like to scrap those as well. And then, of course, we need to donate our tables to the chamber, it was approved at our last meeting. So those are the items we would need to surplus.
I make a motion to approve the scrap and donate that pass.
Seven.
All right, discussion. Q?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
My man.
Yeah.
All right, next is the discuss, how the funding.
So as you know, the federal government has dispersed some more art for funding, um, it's kind of the second round of the coronavirus funding. Um, it's getting dispersed to all the states, cities and counties. states, cities, and counties. We, as a city, were getting a little over half a million dollars to us. We, a couple of months ago, just discussed it, just kind of preliminary of what it could be used for. And I kind of put that information back in your package. There's, the biggest thing is, you know, water and wastewater projects, you definitely can, they let you, you know, for COVID personal protection items, getting information out to people. We talked about maybe a messaging system to the city. We also talked about maybe a more permanent doorway coming into City Hall. Humboldt has acquired about helping purchase a power cot for them. So we just threw those out as a few things. And then at the municipal league this last week, there was a lot of talk about ARPA funding. So what you can and can't do with the money, since it's our federal dollars, it's a federal grant, actually, the state will not get involved in saying what you can use it for and what you can't. The information that's out there, it's kind of just what was in the package. It's very general. So it doesn't say, you know, you can purchase X with this and be okay, or you can't purchase X and be okay. The only way you'll kind of know whether it's approved or not is you spend money on it and once they come in and they audit you and if they say, this is an approved expenditure, you'll have to pay that money back. And then you don't get that money reimbursed back to you to use on something else. So basically, Rob Fortin with the Department of Legislative Audit, he gave a big talk on this. He really encouraged cities, if you have a water or wastewater project, use it on that because you know that is going to be a qualifying item to go on. There's going to be a lot of red tape. You're going to have to follow all the federal bid laws and procurement laws, which is a little bit different than the state law. So there's going to be a lot of regulation, a lot of red tape, a lot of reporting. So he said if you've got a, a project, like our upcoming wastewater treatment, he really recommended using funds on that. You can spend on anything. It's at the discretion of the city to spend on other items. He says, but when you come back for an audit, you're really going to have to justify that to the federal government of what you're spending on, why, and how it qualifies for the ARPA funding. So, you know.
And I would imagine that already because of just the character of the wastewater treatment facility and you guys need to do, many of those items are going to be taken care of anyway.
Yes, they said, so basically, with water and wastewater, if the project qualifies for SRF funding, which ours does, it'll qualify under the federal regulations because you have to follow all the A131 audit laws, all the Bacon?
Davis Bacon.
Davis Bacon rules. Yep, that's a federal requirement. You've got to follow all the Davis Bacon rules. So you're already covered under those federal regulations.
I wouldn't want to tie that to the wastewater treatment facility.
Why would we want to tie it?
Because it'd apply to the whole project, wouldn't it?
Well, yeah, I mean, we would just.
So I can pick a project that is $1 million and apply it to that because it's small iteration. Otherwise, you're adding expense.
I mean.
On a $14 million project, in my opinion.
So with $14 million project, you're going to have to get an SRF loan. I mean, we're hoping to get some grants with it, but you're going to have to loan some of it. With being able to apply half a million dollars, you're going to get a smaller loan. I mean, it's just going to make a difference in your payment.
Sure.
I mean, you're going to have to pay more.
But if we have, I mean, if my thinking skewed a bit here, if I secured those federal funds, I've got to jump through all the federal loopholes. It seems like if, over the course of the whole wastewater treatment plan, it's going to cost, everybody's going to dial up their bid a little bit to jump through all those federal loopholes.
They're going to have to do it regardless.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, they're going to have to do it regardless.
Yeah.
Like I said, the SRF are still subject to all those requirements.
So Davis Bacon, I mean, I understand the Davis Bacon.
Yeah, I'm sure you have to deal with it.
I don't think there's any additional one that, SRF is a federal fund that is one.
Yeah, that's just it.
It's a federal.
That's got to be a bad thing. So you know you'll meet, and that's what he said, you know you'll meet all the requirements for that.
That's what I'm saying, you're doing them anyway.
Yeah.
Right.
But to your, maybe to your point, another option out there that I think we could consider is if we've got low interest rate, long-term financing on our wastewater treatment facility and there's another, and there's another line we want to put in to open up another development or another project that we'd like to do that would be a smaller.
Yes.
And piece those together and there's still wastewater or water projects, that might be a better use of that funds just from cash flow.
Yeah.
Crazy. Six in a month. That's going to be, I mean, that's a, you know.
Maybe a couple of projects.
Yeah, so I mean, not to say we have to do it for a wastewater plant, but I think it's a very safe bet to do it for a water or wastewater project. We know, we know those funds are secure that way.
Yep. Can this do our sewer line go up to the sports complex?
Sports complex, yeah.
That'd be another great one.
Because it can reduce what we draw on our SRF loan there.
Right, right.
Because we haven't started any of them, so it's.
Right.
And basically, it's, you know, any expense from the March of this year, you have to have it obligated by 2024 and then spent by 2026. So as long as we, as long as we know what project we want to do by 2024, anytime in between there, it works.
We've got projects coming up that we did, right?
You've seen our CIP, we have projects.
Yeah.
We can definitely obligate.
Right.
Exactly, so.
How do you do?
Thanks.
You don't need anything on that at this point?
No, not at this point. We will, we'll have further talks. And when we identify a project we want to go move forward to, when we talk about funding for these projects, we'll decide if we want to use those funds on it.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right, so next item we have is to review and to approve the liquor license. Open liquor license.
Okay, so we have the one open liquor license now. We did do an RFP on it, though we're due on the 12th. We received one RFP and that is included in your packet. The, basically, their, as you want to say, their proposal for buying the liquor license is $10,000. That is a one-time payment. They would pay to the city if we approve accepting this. And then they would be responsible for the application fee to the state for the license, which is $1,500. You know, every year, that application fee. So the proposal, though, they, you know, I'm sure you've read through it, you know, they do not expect to have this venue open and running till, I think, 2023. They time construction next year and then actually operational in 2023. So, you know, you wouldn't see that liquor license being used for sales tax, but yet you're getting that one time upfront payment that can kind of offset that. Like I said, this is the one, our only applicant. The city can accept or reject any and all bids, so we don't have to accept this proposal or we can move forward with it. So I guess that's for discussion for you guys in this council. What do you want to approve now, getting the liquor license or not?
Did this proposal come with an application? I'm just curious, because we haven't done this process like this before.
Basically, you know, this is the proposal. They just need to provide this information. Most of the information they provided on the cover letter when I was going through it.
Sure.
They just basically stated in their, their letter. There was enough, a form per se. You know, they just had to provide this information to the city.
The only question I have is if we approve this tonight, is there anything in their application? I mean, you want to go pending approved application or pending approved application?
Yeah, I think, I think.
People acceptable, you can.
Yeah.
Pending the.
Approved.
Approval of an app, a formal application.
How far do they have to be down the process before they can apply to the state or can they apply right away?
I mean, you can apply for a liquor license at any time. The liquor license runs January to December.
Right, so they're not going to use it in 2022. They probably won't want to apply until 2023. So if we approve this, it's going to set, that's what you're saying, it's going to set for a year.
Yeah, it's going to set for a year. Yep, exactly.
Depending on how long it lasts. What you're saying, Jeremy, is we don't have an application like to, like cannabis license.
I mean.
Now, there's a state.
You will have a state, a state application. We'll still get one, yes.
And they'll submit that for 2022.
Yes, yeah, there will just won't be used.
We're just selling the rights.
Yes, exactly.
Basically.
You're just.
Would you issue one for 2022 or not?
And then we're going to wait.
Yeah, I think so. I think they're, they're buying this liquor license, so we would issue them a license for 2022. They just wouldn't use it. And then we'd reissue again in 2023, just annually, just like every other liquor establishment.
They'd have to pay now, so.
Yep, they'd have to pay now.
So they have to pay now, but they're going to have to apply in 2022. They can't just set. They're going to have to apply.
Yep, yep. Even though they don't use it, they'll have to apply to secure that license.
Got it.
So they will fill out a liquor license application.
That's $1,500 in January.
Yep, yep, it'll be, it's our basic.
So they can tie it up for two years for $13,000 bucks.
Oh, yeah, for two, yeah, for $3,000.
Yeah. I don't know, I don't like the idea that's sitting out of the two years. I guess you might sit out of two years anyway, but.
Right.
Well, the good news is we had somebody that wanted to offer. And they have a workaround. I mean, this has never been a contingency.
But if they've got the liquor license, they're probably a little bit more content to do what they want to do.
Correct.
I mean, if they don't have liquor license, they might back out of their plans.
Right, right. They're going to spend this money. That's going to, yeah.
Yeah, they're going to spend.
Right, right. So maybe January, we can have a chance to review it.
You do, yep.
And if they're not running by summer or fall of '23, then you just say.
You don't renew it.
January '24.
You don't renew it.
Yeah, we have something to wait for one.
Yep, yep, because it'd be just like every other liquor license. It gets reviewed annually.
For what? How would that taste to not approve it and do this again?
I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license proposal pending approval of the application.
Second. All right.
I do have some discussion. So, so it's October of '21. I assume they're going to get their application.
Right.
Let's just say they get their application that's approved '21. We cash check for $10,000 bucks. January, they're going to have to, January, we're looking at $1,500, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So that's, that would be the, those would be the steps.
Yep, so with approval of this, they'd have to pay us $10,000, submit an application with the $1,500 fee. We would go through the hearing process, just like we do with all the other liquor licenses, to approve them for 2021.
So in January.
2022, sorry.
So this license, if it all goes through, would be effective January 1st, 2022.
Yep.
Because we're just starting that whole renewal cycle. Yep, so this is, and actually, we've kind of put this deadline on it so they could get in that renewal cycle just with everybody else.
I guess what I'm getting at is we're not going to charge them $1,500 for 2021 and turn around and charge them $1,500 for 2022.
That's not our plan, yeah.
Hey, other than concerns, if, if nobody with an existing building, building town, built a new, just buy for this, or put a proposal together, they're, they're in a mess. You know what I mean?
Okay.
And anybody who's going to build something new, in the same timeline and so.
And you're going to want the license before you, your.
Yep. And I did send this proposal out to existing establishments, thinking if they want to expand or want to do something different. And I also sent it out to a person from Sioux Falls that acquired about it. So, I mean, it's, it's gotten out there, so.
So let me put that hat on once. Let me put that economic development hat on once and say, okay, what does this, what leverage does this take away from you, Amy? This availability of this liquor license?
Currently, I don't think it would take away from economic development because we don't really have one, or an individual or business wanting to come here right now with the use of that. So I don't think it's taking anything away from us yet, but possibly next year, it could be situation with some things that we have currently going on.
Right. And to my first comments, this group has a plan?
Mm-hmm.
With or without this liquor license, with this one? Does this just change his plans a little bit?
This is one mile west of Western Avenue on Mickelson Road. That's next to the city?
Mm-hmm.
A mile west of.
We've got about five miles of city roads. Big dome.
Is it western? Did you go somewhere?
It.
Yeah, we did. So here's the map.
Pretty chump over there.
Yeah, here's the map. So this is western. This is all next to it. Here's their place. They came and stood the building and everything.
This is Mickelson.
Sign out here.
This is Mickelson.
Just looking at your tenants record here.
Probably was. I had that medical thing. And then that turned into spring summer, so.
Well, then I just want to add another thing with Travis's comment too, is could it potentially tie up something? Yes. But could it also benefit us in the long run too? Because if they don't get approved now and say everyone else comes through the approval process and they continue to still get their same licenses and it doesn't open up the door for them, that could really kind of hurt us too with the amount of weddings and events that they could be bringing to our area. So that's just another flip side to it.
Yeah, it's a great project on its own.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, O'Callaghan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. And we got our bids in. Next, we got the egg line bid and fencing bid for projects of the sports complex.
Yep. So as you know, we went up for bids on egg line and on the fencing for the two East fields. We just got one bidder on each. But the egg line, it was Brian Rock came in with a bid of $54 a ton, which we kind of looked back at previous bids we got. And it, it seems pretty reasonable as far as, we had a little cheaper bid a few years ago, but it's quite a few years ago, so there hasn't been much change. So that was a pretty good bid, we felt. And then on the fencing, American Fence put in a bid of a hundred, a little over $170,000 as their bid, which was a little more than their estimate than in their previous estimate. They did have the middle rail in the fence and we thought it was important just for, you know, reinforcing to have that middle rail. So we figured it was pretty close to what they had quoted. So, once again, these are bids. You can accept them. You can reject them. But that's what we're coming up.
And with these bids, we did quantities. So we, if we need to add or, we can by just changing, you know, by the dollar amount of what we spend. So like if the fences aren't going to be as big as we're thinking, we just deduct that off there. So it's all set up by, like I said, portage and tollage.
I have two other motions.
We probably want to do each one of these separately.
I make a motion that we accept the bid from, uh, Brian, Brian Rock for $54, $54 dollars a ton for the egg line.
Full second. Okay, discussion?
We got some, you said we got some place to pile it up, Terry?
Well, yeah, we'll pile it. That's what we've always done in the past. We just stockpile it.
That's going to be delivered as planned.
Yeah, this is going to be delivered by.
Yeah.
And we're going to, we're going to spot check random trucks as they come in.
We've served in the Kenyan, pulled a couple here we've done in the past.
You said we serve the Ken. I, I'm asking, are we going to or?
Yeah, we will.
I mean, you can kind of say, yeah, we can, we might not, you know. I'm asking, are we going to?
Yes, we are going to.
I'm just curious.
It's a construction manager's job.
Yeah.
To dictate that, yeah.
All right, any other questions, discussion on that? Motion? Alright, Obo? Brandon?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
Maya?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yep.
Brandon?
Yes.
Alright, we have a motion on fencing.
Motion to approve the bid proposal for $170,068.40 from American Fence.
Same thing.
Discussion.
So is that this poll or is that this prior or is this kinda played by you?
End of the year is what was in the bid proposal.
End of the year.
December, yeah. And there also was in the proposal, if for some reason, like can't get the supplies or whatnot, if we do need to adjust that timeframe, it has to be in written form and agreed upon by both parties, so. But December 31st is the date.
Installed, up and installed.
Yep.
You guys can get out there in the time we pass today.
Is that alright with the construction manager? Are you alright with that, guy?
I think we're good.
Okay.
Oh, wait, you tell him you think we're good, you tell me?
Why do you think I asked you? Why do you think I asked you? That was a setup.
I thought you was out of the question.
There.
Alright, any other discussion? Alright, Obo? Brandon?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Maya?
Yeah.
Q?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
And Randall?
Yes.
And I know this is not on the agenda, but we need to know what kind of fields are being put in to have them set among. We gotta know, we gotta cut for infills and all that.
T-ball, I thought, right?
Well, what did, what did we just make a motion to buy the egg line for, which time?
The original purchaser for that was for the, the one full-size infield and then the grassy field. That's what the quantities were.
One, one of each?
One of each, and what the, that's what the, that's what we put out there for $600,000, or 600 ton. But like I said, we bid it by tonnage, so if we decide to go with the other fields, we can, so. So that's, I just, we gotta have, know which way we gotta go.
So was the fence for a baseball fence or a softball fence?
Those are set up for, you can use them for multi-purpose, the fencing, so. Cause the fencing, it will be deeper, because it is based set up for the depth for baseball, but softball people can put, you know, other fence in, yeah.
I'd be fine with, I'd be fine with whatever the committee would recommend.
Well, the committee's probably not gonna be meeting before this would be started.
I think that we've got whole softball fields in town, right?
Currently.
Yeah, currently, yeah. We have, currently, we are nothing to explore baseball. So I would say we at least need to do one baseball field.
I would put it the one, one, there's one thing you can use here, one has a baseball slash softball, and the other one would be baseball, I guess.
Hi, everybody. PJ Olson, Vice Chair of the Sports Complex Committee. You know, in discussing what is needed, baseball fields are absolutely 100% needed here. However, the original plans were for four multi-purpose fields with egg line infield. And I still believe that that should be how it's laid out for the simple purpose of any tournaments that might happen on the softball side. We also don't know what we're gonna have for baseball numbers yet, where we do know that we have 500 active people playing softball, where all four fields can be full every single night. So my recommendation is still to continue to do the multi-purpose fields, but build the two big enough to have baseball.
So the two right, the two up there right now are multi-purpose?
Two of them are softball. And you can do 12U and under baseball there.
And what's at the park? How many are there? Two or three there?
There's three fields there. One of them's three smalls for, I don't know the age groups.
They can do T-ball there, and then they can do A and under softball. On, on the field C, field B, they can do 12U baseball and under. On field B, same thing on field A, they can do 12U baseball and under on that field as well.
But we don't have a dedicated baseball field for anybody over 12.
No.
I think we need at least four. Which is what we planned on, right?
Right.
That's what, that's what we went for, we went all for bits. That's what we set up, so.
I just know that the, the plans have changed so many times in the last plan that we had, the engineers' due was all for, you know, a fourplex of multi-purpose fields. So now we'll have three multi-purpose fields, one dedicated baseball field. Is that kinda the understanding?
Yeah.
Any other?
It won't, it won't be long until baseball people be in here, wondering what a bunch of ideas help them, they only built one baseball field.
Right.
I was surprised we're not gonna try to put some pickleball.
That's not a straight.
Yeah, that's still.
But the intent was to have one baseball field, grass infield, baseball field, correct? That's what Ron, when you first came and talked with us, right?
Correct.
Okay. And that's when we started down this path, right? Isn't that what we were? I hear what BJ's saying. We got a ton of kids playing softball, and it's nice to be able to use them for everything. But if our intent is to get baseball field in Hartford, we gotta make the commitment to have a baseball field in Hartford, right?
We're gonna be building one on that, you know what I mean?
Someplace, we're gonna be building.
So, yeah, if you get to a point where you feel like you need a motion?
I guess I'd like to have it tonight, if, if we can. I suppose we can't, it's technically, it's kind of under there.
Or not.
I, I think the consensus of the council is the two new fields is gonna be one general purpose and one baseball.
Okay, I just need the guidance for ISG to stake it for us, so if that's the consensus, that's what we'll stake it on.
Both we did and what we just approved.
Right.
Yep.
I said, that's what you just approved, so, yep.
Alright.
Does it, does it matter which one's which? I don't know if it matters. Cause it's gonna be north and south, right?
They're, I don't think it's gonna make up. I think we're planning on the south one probably being the.
Yeah.
Baseball.
I'm Mark Winter. Now, I understand that our both fields can be built as baseball fields, but then the one can be downsized to multi-purpose, while the other one stays with the grass in the field?
The both can be the exact same size.
Okay.
Regulation, regulation.
Baseball, men's football. Yep, infills will be the same size, just the one's gonna have grass infield.
Okay.
So they'll both be set up.
Right.
Okay.
I think that's what we said.
Yep.
Yeah, right?
Cause they're clear as mud.
There you go.
Alright, so.
It'd be way, we'd do way a couple of trials.
Alright, we're gonna keep moving. If you know this, it'll come. Good, thank you everybody for all your help on everything that's involved in the past. That's a big deal. Alright, we're gonna keep moving. We got this dust extension of the farm lease. For track one, two, that's the reservation.
So as the council knows, currently, we are leasing out that 35 acres we have before, you know, we're, if you're doing our facility, it's gonna be 20 on the south side, 10 on the north side. The gentleman that's leasing it is wondering, when we did just for this one year, not knowing exactly, you know, what our plans were for our facility and how fast we'd move ahead. The gentleman who is farming it right now, he is wondering if the city has any interest in extending that lease with him. I've talked with ISG a little bit, saying, okay, are we gonna be doing anything next year? Where we, you know, should it tie up that land? Basically, it sounds like just need to do some more soil bores, you know?
Concerned.
And, and surveying, which could be done this winter probably, before a crop gets in. And they didn't seem to have it, don't think we'd have any problems with letting them do it, or crop on it one more year. Talked with Tom a little bit about it. Didn't know if we need to, since we only did it for one year, if we need to go through the whole bid process again. And Tom believes since we've already done that once, we have a current agreement with them, we could extend.
Just need to do a notice and hearing. You adopt a resolution of intent to lease the property for another year. At the rate was $2.65 an acre, I believe. And then have a public hearing on it, then you can adopt or approve the lease. That's the process, so.
I think we got a fairly good per acre lease on it. Like I said, it was $2.65 that we're getting right now. When we did bid, bid it out last year, we did have one other bidder, I, I have looked this up for sure, and that bid was only $88 an acre, so I think he pays a good. It's the same gentleman. He farmed this for Mac Malin when he originally had it. He, he does all Mac Malin's ground around here. Haven't had any issues at all with them this past year. Seems to be a good runner, haven't had any, anybody complained about weeds, not taking care of it properly or whatnot, so. Except we have to go, if you guys, just tonight, I'm just wondering what are you doing in extension on the farm lease, and if we are, we will go through the notice procedure and get a resolution to you to approve if that's what we wanna look at doing. So I just need to know whether we wanna do that or not, I guess, looking for a consensus for that.
A consensus?
Consensus again.
I say we just extend it for a year.
Yep.
Okay, we'll move forward with getting the, the proper notices out, and then there'll be a resolution in future meeting for you guys to approve that, so. Thanks.
Alright, we have the items that we need to move into executive session for.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work on that.
Thank you.